Directors, um, I've had two of the board of directors request, uh, some that should not be passed at this meeting because they want to go over the actual quotes and they would like, Stuart would like me to get a quote from another company that he recommends.
So at this meeting...
...I have a recommendation, a company that's currently doing it, and they were very clear that for a panel, when it's installed by that company, they're the only ones that are allowed to use it. So if a new company takes over, the whole panel's gotta be ripped out at a tremendous cost. So I think we have to investigate that and find out if they're telling the truth.
Well...
And I asked for a bid from them about two months ago. Somehow it got lost in the shuffle, and I sent an email to them.
Okay, let me just explain what they're saying. The company's called Sentry, and they, um, ten years ago had proprietary rights to their controller. There's still no more proprietary right. In fact, we had Tyson Crop servicing or our inventory for the last five years. So for them to bring this up now, you're just doing that to...
All I'm saying is we gotta check, and if they're right, it could be done. If they're wrong, we'll get...
But that's the case we already defaulted because we have another company working on proprietary rights.
I think it's time to investigate.
Are we still looking into two, are we looking into two other companies, uh, on the elevators?
I have three quotes.
All right, we have three companies, and we feel that we've got, we've got a better company coming in. Uh, let's see, dropping down to the tea shop lease, the tea shop lease. Uh, that seems to come up at every meeting, doesn't it?
They come up at the last one.
They did? Okay, we skipped one. All right, we would, we'd like to kinda get, get that over with and get it through. If we're gonna do it, let's do it. If we're not, let's not.
On the amendments that this is sent to that row.
Yes.
And they're, uh, they're excellent. And, um, so does everyone have a copy of those?
Unfortunately, Linda, the amendments are not final. They're not in final form. And some of the, some of the items that were stricken out should not be stricken out.
Which item?
You don't have it in front of you?
No.
Uh, what say that, uh, we approve this thing, uh, pending whatever we have to do on it because this is just going on forever?
The lease that was sent in that we have here, Exhibit A, is a very poorly written document. I don't believe it was written by an attorney. It is full of grammatical errors, every kind of an error is in here, redundancy, and, uh, before I would even pay this party, whoever sent it, I think that this has to be redone and submitted in some intelligent form.
All right, is anybody...
Are these the Exhibit A?
No.
The whole lease?
Which document are you referring to?
Uh, this, uh, Fisher broke the...
Bibi?
Yes, I have some questions.
Go ahead, Bibi.
One thing, a kitchen has to be put in there. Who is paying for the kitchen?
All right, Clyde, who's paying for the kitchen? You're back there.
I'm paying for the kitchen.
They're paying for everything, right?
The kitchen had to be put in there.
You wanna come up here, Clyde, and just give them, give us a... Come on, give, come up and give us a quick lowdown so we can get this thing over with already. It's coming up at every meeting.
Who said they need a kitchen?
You need a kitchen too? No, get up there at the mic, get up, get the mic up front. You don't need a kitchen.
Who needs a kitchen?
What do you want?
Need a teapot and a microwave?
You have to have...
Relax, it's gotta be the one on one.
All right, go ahead, Clyde. Take the mic away.
I have to answer the question.
Let him, let him speak. All right, give us a low...
And you think that a microwave is going to be adequate to make your sandwiches and everything else?
You want...
As we ask for?
I'm sorry?
I think you're just kidding about a microwave, wasn't you?
No.
No, you're just, you're using the microwave.
Oh, sure. You know, we're not putting this thing...
And how about a dishwasher?
Oh, he must have a dishwasher.
He could, yeah, I'm speaking. Correct. Yes?
Do it by hand.
Is that it?
Also, I believe that your employees must be given a place to have their lunch.
No, that's my...
That's not true.
It's not true.
That's not true. No, that's not true. They could eat in the car. Where are they gonna eat? Most of them, they could eat in the car.
Like we did at the shrimp store.
We can take away the arts and crafts room. If there's something, something in there, there's something better than that.
To a cake pot.
That's a good thing. Not that I know of. All right, Clyde, give us a little bit on this thing so we can really get it done.
The lowdown?
Yeah, the lowdown. What, what's gonna go on so we just get this approved? Uh, I'm sure. Any questions that anyone... All right, so we have any questions for Clyde?
No, Clyde.
Yeah?
I thought this was gonna be in a final form, and instead, some of the stuff that is stricken out should not be stricken out. And, uh, uh, if you, if you look, uh, here, for instance...
Which page do you want?
Uh, I'm on page one of Exhibit A. Now you see this, this, uh, uh, this is, this is to be stricken out, okay? Now here, the Biden tenant has not been received all of its terms of this lease. I should stay in. This comes out of order because it should not be subject to approval. You gotta approve, okay? But you have to be on a default. Uh, okay, and, uh... Why, why is this working out? The only thing that we needed to agree on was the government's...
All right, uh, okay. All right.
Can I have a question?
Let's, uh, Francis, Francis, let's...
But I think we should vote now...
Yes, I think so too.
On approving or disapproving because these guys have been...
I agree.
...been waiting a long time, and will get a new lawyer to write a real lease. This is abortion...
You wanna make the motion, Stuart?
I make a motion that we vote to approve or disapprove on the condition that we get a regular lease done by a professional.
Okay.
Which why... Yeah, but it's not fair to them to keep going back and forth.
No, I mean, I vote, I vote to approve this, this thing, and let's...
No, sorry, this is...
No.
Sorry, this is...
We'll vote to approve it, and then just get it worked out.
We will have to keep bringing this up at every meeting. It's been approved.
Is there a problem here? Is there a problem to work out here with this? Every time? Did you present the deletions before the meeting? So we... Did he did? Did, did anybody see the deletions before the meeting? Did we read it?
This lease cannot be signed by anyone. The lease...
Howard, what's your thoughts? I'm not an attorney, unfortunately.
I know that.
So I would comment on it.
Howard?
Yes, there.
The point is, the deletions were discussed as appropriate because they're very...
What?
The deletions were discussed as appropriate. You can see what lines are deleted.
Right.
So we need to approve that, and then get it to final form.
Put them with them out. The lease is not worth anything.
Well, certainly, at, at least these amendments, Clyde and Christine had a few lines they once deleted, which I thought we agreed should be deleted.
It's not true.
Clyde, I would never sign this lease until it's, uh...
It's gotta be put in final form, and you're looking at what the final form would look like.
Okay, so bottom line is, what are we going to do about it? I mean, what, what do you, what do you suggest, Linda, that we do about it?
I suggest that, you know, that we approve, amend it, uh, the amendments with the deletions that Clyde and Christine want, and I thought, we all thought should be deleted, stricken lines, and, and then move to get it in final form. So what you're looking at is have to approve that those deletions are okay, and then we get it in final form.
All right, you need, you need a motion to, uh, to make it, to...
Let me just add one thing. It's not only the deletions, though, the entire lease has to be redone. It looks like a high school kid put it together. I would never sign this lease in a billion years. But what I would recommend is that since the board is for them, let them get started because they've been hanging around long enough. When did you start this? In November? Yes, I mean, it's not fair to them, but it also wouldn't be fair. If they sign this lease, they'd be nuts. But at least they can get started.
Get started, yeah.
That's what I have to do.
They can't get started without a lease.
If we give them permission, they can get started.
They can't get insurance without the lease.
It's gotta be put in final form.
So then we'll rush the lease through and have a special meeting and get this done.
Why can't we give them a 30-day lease, and then we'll make a new lease after 30 days? Taking a start?
I think the board has to decide whether it wants this T-room or not. And there's one other option we haven't even considered. The, 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 the tea room. Bates has some fee. We use the association money in the equipment. Should we have a lease? Of what?
No positions like to...
Yes, Sullivan.
We, the, the board must need to approve the deletion that you see the stricken lines and then move to get it in final form.
Linda, you're not listening. Then some of the deletions cannot be approved.
What does approve, Matthew?
There are several. This is, this, we, we need a, we need a meeting to sit down, go over it line by line, and come up with a final document. It's not going to be sought in, in a forum such as this.
That's correct.
Right. The only, the only additions or changes are the amendments...
Look, Linda, I suggest that we set a special meeting to do this as soon as possible, do it right, and let them get on with their project.
Okay, why don't we do that? We'll set a special meeting for, let's, let's go over it, you know, what has been reviewed. We'll do it, and in a week, we'll just take care of it, get it over with.
I have a suggestion. Let's have a special meeting. Is two weeks a fair time? Two weeks from now?
Is two weeks a fair time, Clyde? What do you think?
I'll, I'll next week. When I do it next week?
I can't be here next week, but...
All right, forget it. In two weeks, we get it all done, and let's put this thing to bed already. It's getting crazy.
All right, two weeks.
Let's forget it.
Bibi?
You also need blueprints showing exactly how they're going to have this room set up. Where are they gonna pay and their food? How would they...
I don't, I don't believe we need all that. Do we need all that, Linda?
No.
We don't need all that, no.
We don't need all that.
No, we don't need that.
The city requires they will do.
Yeah, we don't need that. Okay, Clyde, we'll give you two weeks, and then we'll do it. We'll push it through, okay? All right, we're working. All right, tea shop, tea shop done.
I was going to suggest that...
You want to do that?
I, I was going to suggest that you...
Would you wait to do it?
May I? No. Uh, I was going to suggest that we could do it on...
Did anybody ask you about it?
Uh, I didn't ask you. Uh...
You wanna head that committee? You wanna head that committee, Stuart? You wanna head that committee?
I guess that would be convenient. If, if we could do this one, um, um, over the weekend, where you get a group together to go over the, the workings and get it in some kind of shape, that would, that would be wonderful, okay?
Okay, Stuart's gonna head that group.
No, Clyde, what, uh, Francis said, if you just want me, let her do it. On out.
All right.
You gather.
Okay, Francis will head the group and take care of it. All right, end the story. All right, new business, proposed amendments. Or proposed amendments. Is it you, Michael?
Well, you know...
What, what number is that on? Six, six. Before six, what's our number five?
Yeah, number five. Number, number six? Number six.
What is an elevator retainer? What is it doing? Restrictive, restrictive. What is it that's...
Stops the door from... You know, it's an emergency. Let's say you come in here, it won't splash you. There's a special boy.
When we, uh, before we, before we do that, I mean, why don't we just approve that hardship case, one thing, one hardship case, okay? Why don't we, why don't we do the hardship case before we get this? It's gonna take a little time. We have a hardship case to consider. Why don't we do that? Yeah, let's do the hardship case because this is, this is gonna be a hardship, I can see that. All right, Howard wants to address. We have a hardship case that we're gonna consider.
Okay, um, there was a hardship letter sent in by a unit owner, basically asking the board to consider allowing them to rent their unit before the specified period. Um, in their letter, they're saying they cannot make payments if they could not rent the unit, and therefore they'll be delaying the going for closure and so forth. The board is gonna consider allowing them to do that. But just to be, I have to bring this to the board and to the unit owners. If we do approve this hardship letter, um, we're opening them ourselves for any investor, anyone to buy a unit and turn to the board of directors and said, and say, "We are on the hardship. We need to rent our unit." Just wanted to throw that out there and just to caution the board because we're gonna end up with a hundred hardship that we did not, uh, say that.
Our hardships have to be, uh, they have to be judged on each one's merit, and, uh, and if these people, if these people can't make their maintenance, then they have to be foreclosed on, then we're not gonna get any maintenance. So if they're in good standing and they're up to date on their maintenance, we, we have to consider a hardship. Yes, yes.
Yes, we have, uh, we have done this in other places. And the board is speaking, please, ma'am.
Basically, they weren't calling her. Yes.
I'd like to say something first.
This lady is still speaking, Scott.
The board discusses it before the unit...
Stop, they called the lady to speak, and it's okay. She can do that. Go ahead. I can't...
What difference is in that? What difference is in that?
Yes.
If a sitter... I was trying to say, once, I've worked in a rental office for 15 years, like, seven years, seven years. Once you go back and you're allowed to change this rule, how many more rules are we gonna change to allow updating owners and is finally gonna be the same ghetto?
Okay, so we appreciate your input, but we're gonna have to go on. Okay, we're gonna have to go on. And that doesn't make it a ghetto because somebody's renting. Renter, rent, we were renters at one time. I know I was, and I consider myself a ghetto dweller.
Okay, I wanna ask Ms. Mezzero the question. Ms. Mezzero, in this, in this matter, where does the board get its authority to waive one of the rules in our condo declaration, which outlines exactly what the rules are after you purchase and you have to... Where do this, does the board get its authority to do that? It does not have the authority. Now, in July of last year, we had an amendment committee meeting, and we recommended to the board that we put an amendment in that would, that would permit the board to waive any hardship cases with a 75% vote of the full board. And that was turned down by the majority of the board last year. We don't have the authority to waive it.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna make a statement.
If we, please, let me, if we waive it...
Mr. Samuel's gonna make a statement.
If we waive it, if we waive it, then we waive it for every owner who wishes to make a hardship case.
All right, I'm gonna make it, I'm gonna make a statement. Mr. Samuel's had a hardship case, uh, a couple of months back, where somebody had came in early and his, I believe it was Selma's apartment was available, and we gave her a pass, and she moved in before she was supposed to move in, and we made an exception. It was a hardship case. Do you deny that?
No, that, that wasn't a violation of the Declaration.
Yes, it was.
No, it wasn't. No, Danny, it was not.
It was a hardship case, and we allowed it to happen?
It wasn't.
Yes, Bibi?
The board does not have to... If the majority of the board wants to waive it tonight, it's absolutely okay. However, they should know they're violating the condo docs very clearly and opens up an avenue and sets a precedent for every owner, as he said, to do whatever they want. Everybody will present a hardship. Who's gonna determine which is the greater hardship?
This is, uh, this is a case, I believe, where the owners, uh, where the, where the owner, uh, is, uh, is, uh, is just a couple of months shy of the year, isn't it?
Yes, it's only seven months.
Pardon?
They're two months shy of the year.
They're two, they're two months shy of the year, um, so, um...
They did not.
No, they did not.
It's not been approved. There was not...
Not been approved yet.
It was not approved by the board, but with the...
No.
Yes, it was approved by the ownership in the mailing. What do you mean it wasn't approved? Was approved by the ownership, and now it's another step getting re-approved by the board. People approved that.
Only six months.
The ownership voted on six months, and they approved it. And that was to move the...
The majority votes accept that rule, but it was written in violation, was not separated as separate amendment, so we have to redo it, but...
Yes, it was written properly.
Written properly, but it was voted out, and then the...
By the union, it's not a rule, and therefore can't be going back out in the next mailing within a week or so. Then it's gotta be filed. It doesn't assume that you...
All right, all right, uh, does anybody, does everybody agree that we're living in some hard financial times here? Don't you think there's some hardships?
I, I...
We don't wanna, we don't wanna take any, uh, make any exceptions for hardships.
I don't think we can.
We have the right to make the exception.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do. On a vote, a majority vote, we do have the authority to do that.
Listen.
I think that the, I think that...
Now, we have the right to do it.
Now, we can, it, it, it's a fine. Uh, we can move to grant this, um, this exception, uh, with the understanding that it doesn't constitute a waiver of any of the future, future waiver of any motion regulations.
Because I want my exception.
We have made exceptions in the past for hardship cases.
Let's just vote on it. No, let's just vote on it.
On the board, we have done that several times.
Let's just vote on it.
Danny, Dan, can we hear what the exception is?
Yeah, well, if it, if it...
We have a case where somebody can, we're going to throw somebody into bankruptcy. We're going to lose maintenance. We're going to lose assessments.
Right.
Because of two months...
For $750, Scott and I made an appeal to the board that his son wanted to pay everything on his parents' condo. All he wanted was $750 waived, which was late fees. The boy told him they wouldn't do it. So for two years, he didn't pay a penny. He put all the money in a bank. Now the condo is sitting there, and he left and said to the board, "Don't tell me about exceptions." For $750, it was not right. The lawyer's money...
But, but, what, what, what are you saying? Are you saying that the exception should have been made in that case? That's what it sounds like.
In that case, there was no need for an exception. He shouldn't have been charged the late fees in the first place.
I understand that. I understand that. But are you saying that if it was done right, it's, they should have waived those late fees, and he should have been able to have that exception? That's what it sounds like. It sounds like you're saying that.
Yes.
Okay, so if you're saying that, and we made a mistake in that instance, why would we wanna make the same mistake in this instance?
It's not after that.
No, but you're saying it should, the exception should have been made. You were, I thought you said the exception should have been made.
No, no.
Oh, you're saying it was right there.
He shouldn't have been charged for $750 in the first place.
All right, let's have a little order here, okay? We have to have a little order. Uh, Linda has something to say. She knows about the case. Go ahead, Linda.
Yes. Number one, this is not because you own anything. At I, at Fuzzard's, we don't have attorney fees running, and, uh, there's also this surprise coming from directly. Uh, they're not in bad status. They're good status. They've owned for 10 months, a little shy of, uh, what the rule is. We have waived people for people who are in good status, who have spoken directly and not tried to conclude this process. This benefit is not shared, but it's not as simple. It's a good fight to, uh, make...
What Linda, yes, what Linda is saying is that, what Linda is saying, yes, I'm gonna give a translation. What Linda is saying is, they're not, they, they could just as easily do it illegally like a lot of people are doing it, but they're not. They came to the board with it, they explained their situation, and they're trying to do it legally, and they're asking for an exception.
They are not delinquent.
They're not delinquent in their, in their maintenance or anything. And they're two months shy of one year. So we have to, listen, vote on it. Listen, vote on it. We're gonna have a shouting match on it. Let's vote on it.
Anybody who's clean on their maintenance and comes with a story and is under two years can rent whenever they want.
They're making it sound like a first-degree felony. Why don't we just vote on it?
Who is there clean? They can do it.
Let's vote on it. Wait, why shout out for each other? Vote on it. If you wanna vote no, vote no. All right, let's make a motion to vote on this hardship case. They're two months shy. Uh, they need to, they need to get this renter in there in order to avoid bankruptcy, and, uh, all right, let's, let's go off to vote. Uh, the renter's not approved yet, no. Renter will have to be approved, but if we're gonna let them, we're gonna let them rent it, and then we will approve the renter, of course. Subject to approval of the renter. How do you vote, Michael?
Yes.
Here's a yes. I vote yes.
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Yes, four?
No.
No.
There's no voting in the audience, thanks.
No.
No?
No.
All right, so what do we got? Five yeses, two no's. Okay, it's done. Discussion over. Uh, let's see. Oh, I'm sorry, Ralph. Hi. Ralph, I don't think that my, that my phone might not be on. Just, just, is it on? Click it. Sounds like it's on. Just tap it, George, it's on.
Tap, tap.
Yeah, it's on.
Thank you. Gentlemen, can I have your attention please?
All right.
Attention, thank you. I'm curious about something. I heard the word used before. I heard the word used before about setting a precedent, and my concern is, is that you all decide that this is okay to do. What stops, what stops someone? Say it was me in the same circumstance, and you turned me down, and monetarily I was okay, all right? But what are the circumstances still are there where I could sue for some sort of discrimination? Is that... Let me ask you a question. Okay, now, one more point, one more point. I, I heard it said before that in the condo docs, that this, this, this is put in a particular fashion?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, before you guys are voting, aren't you gonna check the, the litigious part of this, the legal part of this? Aren't you gonna check to see if you guys are in the right place to do what you're doing? I know you're doing it from your heart, and that's cool. There's nothing wrong with that. I don't, I don't have an objection to that.
The law is clear, and I can't do it, but they are voting the law. That's the way it stands.
No, put, be kind enough to direct me when I'm just speaking one at a time so I can hear your understanding.
Ralph, you know how many exceptions we get a year?
Say again?
You know how many exceptions we get a year?
No, no.
I think this was the first one.
Well, that's fine. Again, my issue is, again, if there's a litigious point involved, that needs to be investigated.
Okay, we'll, we will investigate.
Ralph, let me explain something.
We will take...
Last year in July, we were gonna pass an amendment that said that under extenuating circumstances, the board can override, but you needed 75%. It failed. That means the board was against it. Now they're for it. You can't have it both ways.
Several exceptions, exceptions on sales, where they didn't have the minimum down payment. We approved an exception of Ryan to, uh, allow somebody...
You got the chair for the law. If the law...
That is what, that, we're mainly on laws and it's... And we are, and in the context of the fact that... And we are, and in the context of the fact that we are including this proposal, which is gonna be mailed out here shortly, which covers this.
I think I've been, I don't wanna...
No, Ralph, you're a hundred percent right. And the floodgates can open and if we knock anyone out of the box, we're subject to a lawsuit.
You know, again, you have to... You wanna act from your heart, but you have to act out of your conscience too. I mean, there's two things to do. And this thing was in, in June, July? I think I was there at the meeting there in July. And in reality, July is not now. There's a lot of stuff that's happened since July, okay? So I don't wanna sound like Simon and Gabe here.
We're also visiting for our bottom line. We're not breaking the matrix.
Okay, thank you, Ralph.